Good afternoon. This is Ascension Parish Planning Commission, January fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen session. We all rise and join us in saying our pleasure of leaving.
Let's leave it to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Staff introduction, please.
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Lindsay Amanda, Legal Counsel for Planning and Zoning.
Ricky Compton, Planning and Development Director.
Ben Moran, Planner.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Jason Taylor, Engineering.
Rhonda Bro, Engineering.
Kevin Bowe, EOA Consultant.
For the record, let's reflect that all Planning Commissioners are present. Brief comments. I consider this a privilege to sit in this chair and serve on this commission. What we ask that we be mindful and respectful of one another is obviously challenges we anticipate. Professionalism is what we ask. I also ask that you consider the task that we're burdened with. Not much of emotion, but the issues and facts of Uniform Land Code. That being said, it would be of good help to you as you present your case either for or against. Make our job easier. The issues of violation, be it the master plan and principles or the planning of Uniform Land Code, are certainly the things that we're tasked with to pass our judgment. That being said, that is the comment. Minutes from last meeting, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll move for approval of the minutes from the December tenth meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted. My first case. A B, Affirmative Mortgage Declaration, Pine Crest Subdivision. Staff?
This is just the last opportunity for the lending institution to speak for or against their mortgage holder subdividing their land. They have received a letter from us and they have up until last week to get anything back to us saying they were okay with it or not, and then this is their last chance to come and speak to you guys about it.
Is anyone present from the lending institution?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted. Adam nine eight, Howard Moore Property.
James Fowle, representing Jesse Rodrick and Earls and Associates Land Surveying on the following family partition. I don't believe any comments were made. We're asking the commission for approval.
Staff comments, please.
Magnolia Ridge, that is a private servitude of access and the current users of it will have to sign this plat allowing the additional use of it. So that's the only, the only thing. Once he gets all those signatures, we recommend approval.
And the signatures start after we approve? Is that the way it works? Then they don't do that in advance?
I don't know if they started getting it.
They know each other out there.
Okay.
If you don't approve it, then...
Then they wouldn't...
There's no use of going to get it by signature.
So we just need to put it in our motion?
Yeah.
At this time, we'll open the floor for public hearing. Any signatures? Any comments from the floor? Please state your name for the record, please.
Jesse... Jesse Rodrick. Eight of the nine people on Magnolia Ridge are family members. I currently own the property and I'm also one to be signing. So if that gives you any comfort in approving prior to the signatures, I think it'll go very well. Thank you.
No further comments? Commissioners? This time, we close public hearing? Any comments from Commissioners? That being said, motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for approval with the contingent upon all signatures being placed on the plat.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted, motion passed.
Thank you.
Nine B, Flossy Vilar Estate. Did I pronounce it correctly? Vilar, Vilar?
Vilar.
Vilar?
James Fowle, representing Ms. Janet Babin, on the following family partition. I think one comment was made about including a setback along the eastern portion of thirty-foot private servitude. It was addressed and corrected on the plat. Asking the commission for approval.
Staff?
This one, the thirty-foot access servitude, they've got fifteen foot of it on their lot and they're putting fifteen foot of it on the neighboring lot. So it's just...
They will be signing.
Space for the signature of the owner of the adjacent lot to sign to allow to put that fifteen foot of it on his property. So with that signature, we recommend approval.
This time, we'll open the floor for public hearing. No comments? Close the floor for public hearing? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
For approval.
About the contingency?
With the contingency. Approve with the contingency.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted, motion?
Thank you.
Nine C, Casey Shepherd Property.
Clint Quinton Mall, representing Earls and Associates and Casey Shepherd. In the following family partition, to my knowledge, all comments have been addressed.
Staff comments?
No comments. Recommend approval.
This time, floor is open for a public hearing? No comments? Floor is closed for public hearing?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted, motion passed.
Thank you.
In a public hearing to approve or deny the following preliminary plats, Hidden Cove.
Good evening, Chad Stevens with MR Engineering, ninety-one thirty-one Interline Avenue, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Here representing the developer, Mr. Corbin Ladner, who's here with us tonight. We're here tonight for preliminary plat for Hidden Cove. It's eleven point eight acres, thirty-five lots. It meets all the requirements of the current subdivision regulations. We have addressed all comments from engineering and planning, including traffic drainage and sewer. And we're here tonight asking for your approval. Thank you.
Staff comments?
No comments. Everything we had on the plat's been addressed. They met with us about this a couple of months ago. We've had a lot of time to go through everything. Everything's good on there. They did not need to submit a full traffic impact analysis because their counts were below the threshold that requires that and their drainage impact study's been approved.
This time, the floor is open for public hearing. Sign in, state your name, please.
Andy St. Pierre.
Address or anything?
Address something?
You'll sign in there.
Do what?
It should be signing sheet here.
Oh. Oh. Okay, I live on six A, two dash five A lot, adjacent to the property that... I was just wondering about them building a fence or anything like that between the properties? The way they got the road turning, it's gonna pretty much turn and be directed within twenty feet of where I sleep at night, my house, the way the road turns. Towards my property. I was just wondering if they were gonna put a fence or any kind of barricades or anything to keep traffic from going, you know, running into my house or...
Where's your, which one is your property again?
Six A, two dash five A.
I got it. South of that loop that comes down, right? Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, we see it.
Oh, yeah, where my, where my house is, it's pretty much where the road turns toward my, my house right there.
Do you have a fence behind your house or yourself?
No, there's no fence right there now. It's, it's all woods right now. As I say, I mean something to stop them from...
How close is your house to the, to the...
About twenty foot.
Staff, is there a buffer requirement for this new development that's going in at all along that road or is that only when you have a treatment plan? Is it meeting those?
We don't require a buffer between residential land uses.
We residential?
He's residential, this is residential. We don't require a buffer. If the applicant developer decides to build a fence, that's on the applicant. The code does not require a buffer or separation between residential land uses.
Okay.
So they can put a road right like twenty feet from my house?
Yeah, I think that's really what the building setbacks are for with you not being able to build on your property line, them not being able to build on their property line. Excuse me. I don't, I don't think there's any buffer requirements that are...
Speed bumps or anything to slow people down from going.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's gonna...
This other vision we live in now, I mean, they drive wide open up down the road now. I mean, it's gonna be the same thing right there next to my house. And within twenty foot of where I sleep at night.
The road is, the road will be.
The road will be.
Well, if the road wasn't there and a house, you'd have a house within the same distance, right?
Well, that's better than somebody running me over and I...
Yeah, no, I understand what you're concerned.
Yeah.
Or at least the fence to block the lighting and everything else, you know, whenever they turn, they're gonna be turned straight toward my house. Sorry. You know, fence, at least a fence would block the lighting and everything else, you know, speed bumps, slow people down or, you know, anything.
Yeah.
We ask that time has expired. Would the developer like to respond, care to respond?
Okay.
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 That's fair.
We were asking, we were asking you questions. Do you have any other comments? We were asking you questions. So do you have any other comments?
Um, no, that's...
Okay.
I understand them.
Anyone else? Any further?
Hi, my name is Kimberly Pierce and my property backs up to the lot, I mean, to the developer's area. And so I have the same concerns with the fence and then the drainage issue right there.
What's your lot number?
She's right next, nineteen A.
No, she's further back.
Nineteen A?
Yeah. Nineteen A?
So the road isn't there, but the houses are there.
But the houses are there, yeah. I'm not right along the road.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well...
She was just asking about a fence.
About the fence line, too.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think there are any requirements that we have in place with the parish code that requires a developer to put a fence up along their piece of property. I mean, it's...
Okay.
It's possible that something could maybe be worked out. We, we, we deal with the drainage quite often on most of these developments. I mean, this is something that this, they had to submit a drainage impact study to the parish that shows that they cannot and will not dump any water on anyone else, you know, any adjacent piece of property. They have to contain it within their property, so...
The water does come that way already.
It comes off of that property onto you guys' property? Yeah. I mean, they can't...
Make it worse, huh?
They can't make it worse. How about that? I mean, whatever enters your property now, if anything, I would like to...
From what I read in there, it says it goes straight that way and that way, but that's, that's not the way.
In the drainage impact study? Really? It said it went in the wrong direction?
Says it goes east and west, but...
Opposite direction.
East and west? So it heads south, you're saying?
Well, the detention ponds on the eastern property.
Yes, all the way to the back.
All the way to the back. Well, we'll get the developer to talk about that.
Yeah, we can maybe address it.
Is there any other comments from anybody?
Any further comments?
My name is Wallace Ganey and my property backs up against...
Six A, two dash four.
Two, four. I also have a concern now that I found out what side the road is gonna be on because all of our backyards that are, the houses that are adjacent to this new property, that means the road is gonna be that close with the ten-foot servitude to all of our back, back doors?
Not to yours. No.
You're gonna have houses behind you.
You'll have houses.
With a hundred and thirty foot...
Mr. St. Pierre is the only one that's got that problem with the road.
Oh, the road's gonna be on the...
It's, it curves.
On the north side of that piece of property.
On the north side of it.
Correct.
Okay, so the houses will be, alright. So again, most of us that live on that area, we all have children and everything else and the, again, my concern is some type of fencing and barrier to separate the two properties. And again, as Mr. St. Pierre was speaking about the, the drainage, yes, that lot does drain into our yards on that side. So any buildup of, of new housing in that land is higher, everything's gonna come our way and we already have enough trouble with, with heavy rains in our yards. So I just wanna make that statement on that.
Any further comments?
My name is John Hinch, I'm an attorney. I represent Mary Hood, who owns forty-one oh fifty-eight Wallace Acres, and we are in the process of forming a homeowners association. I think there are several issues that are raised by this potential development. One is, that has already been mentioned, is the drainage issues. When there are heavy rains, those ditches fill. To my knowledge, no one's home has ever flooded before, but I don't know where the drainage proposal is coming from, whether the water is going to drain from out towards Highway forty-four or whether it's gonna join to the drain, adjoining lots. If the potential developer intends to increase the... Build up the land in order that these houses do not flood, it is gonna, and I can't, I don't remember whether it's north or west or whichever way it is, I can tell you it's out towards forty-four, which is where the water needs to drain. Needs to drain towards forty-four and in the back. If it goes to the adjoining lots, I am pretty sure that there are numerous applicable laws that do not allow a developer to develop piece of land that floods an adjoining land on, okay? Other issue is a traffic issue, that Highway forty-four in the mornings and in the evenings is unbelievably busy. I do not know what the impact, and I guess there has been a traffic impact done with regard to what these adjoining lots and these additional people, what type of traffic issues they're going to create. It is one issue if it is a single family dwelling, it's another if it's gonna be multiple dwellings. It is my understanding, I am not sure, that there's been a proposed development here before. I'm not sure about that. If it is, I think we would certainly like to know what circumstances have changed with regard to, to why this would be approved and that was denied, okay? I think in a very serious, serious issue, which you don't wanna hear about again, is the drainage issue and where, where is this drainage going to go? Because now it, the ditches get full, they don't flood, but once you start putting additional water, that's gonna go not towards forty-four and not towards the back, but towards people you've heard from tonight. Those people's houses are gonna flood if they're gonna build up the, the, the base so that these houses do not flood.
Okay, sir. Time has expired.
Okay.
Any additional comments?
Jeremy Bruce Orne. And we own the eighteen-acre strip of land directly beside the new subdivision. That land has been in our family for a hundred years or more. There used to be an oil well there, there used to be a pig farm there, been there my whole life. We have trouble now with the neighbors in the neighborhood surrounding being one of the only patches of woods left because all of the property in Ascension Parish is turning into subdivisions, wanting to come and play behind my house and my property, riding four-wheeler, squirrel hunting, rabbit hunting, leaving trash. We've got enough problems now. None of us are looking forward to having another neighborhood stuck right next to us. These neighbors called the sheriffs on me on every couple of months for doing what I've done my whole life. I can't squirrel hunt behind my house anymore. I can't fool with any of my hot rods or my race cars or work in my shop late at night. The sheriffs get called on me. Having a neighborhood of rocks throw from the front door of my shop, it's not gonna turn out good. We're gonna fight them. It's gonna be a battle. My only concern is none of us on that stretch of land want another neighborhood right next to us, but I know the decisions you're gonna make, you're gonna make anyway. I just thought I'd voice my opinion. We're not looking forward to it. And I think drainage is gonna be a problem, too, because I grew up in those woods. I know how wet those woods are. I know how low it is where they're in the subdivision. There are spots back there where they can't grow any grass because it's so wet. I don't know where the water's gonna go either unless it comes in our property. And then we're gonna have a swamp behind our house as bad enough back there as it is. We're just not looking forward to it. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce Orne.
Floor's still open. Staff, before we ask the developer to come forth, could you elaborate? It appears that obviously there's been a traffic impact study approved as well as drainage. Could you shed some light to those who brought up some issues?
As, as far as the traffic impact study being done, we, we, we looked at the layout of the road as well as the rules that we generally follow for traffic impact studies. They felt well below a, a level one threshold, which is, they just need to tell us how many cars are going there and not elaborate on that any further. The, the, in my opinion, as far as the, the speeding through the area, the, the fact that the road is curved will actually help with that. It will slow people down. It's supposed to, anyway.
We hear it doesn't really work in some areas.
It's, 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 it's actually one of the traffic calming measures that's recommended through FHWA to, to put in a chicane, which is essentially what this is, an S curve.
Drainage impact.
So as far as the drainage impact goes, we reviewed it and the site as proposed right now is gonna have a detention pond in the back of the eastern side of the property. None of the drainage from the proposed development, it'll all be directed from the dividing point east towards that pond and discharged at a rate less than what the existing conditions is, is what they've shown in their impact study. There is a section that will also be draining towards, rest towards LA forty-four, but that as well has been sized to where, and reduced to where the post-development conditions is less than the pre-existing conditions. So we haven't seen the actual subsurface infrastructure and the grading. That'll come during the review of the construction plans to make sure everything's in accordance with the drainage impact study that they submitted, which all fell in...
The water is routed through open ditches or subsurface?
That part hasn't been shown as far as now. They just showed as far as what the runoff is. The construction plans, when they, approving of this gets them into the construction plan side of it, then they submit engineering drawings and then all of that gets reviewed to make sure it's in accordance with the drainage impact study.
Let's just ask the developer to further explain that.
Go ahead, sir.
The area which was outside is open ditch. The area on, the area on Wallace Acres, in the back, it is open ditches. And those ditches, when it rains hard down, those ditches do not overflow, but those ditches are very high. And the concern, I think, is which is, which needs to be addressed by the developer. Personally, as a homeowner, I think that if there's a quality subdivision built next door, doesn't do anything but help, value your property. The issue is, is that if you go down Wallace Acres Road, there's an open ditch there and that ditch fills up. If the grade is taken higher in order to develop this subdivision, that water is going to flow to Ms. Hood's property, to these other people's properties in the, in Wallace Acres, and their houses are gonna flood. I mean, they are. And so if there's not some type of guarantee, and maybe the developer can be required to put up a bond so that when these houses do flood, because if this water flows, if they build this up four feet or whatever it's gonna be required to do to develop these homes, unless these homes are put on piers, that water is gonna flow back to Wallace Acres and those are open ditches. And that is a major concern. The traffic impact, the other things, those are things that people can live with. People having their houses flooded and full of water, they can't. And, you know, that's the, that, 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 that's, 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 that's a, that's a major, that's, that's a major issue. And I don't know where the liability for that winds up with at the end of the day, but if, you know, you gentlemen would take the time to go and take a ride down Wallace Acres and look at those open ditches and look at a day when it rains and see how those ditches fill up, and then if I've got four feet of grade or whatever it's gonna do to take those out of a flood impact zone, those houses are gonna flood.
Let's hear from them. He's all, both of these gentlemen are...
When it rains now, flooded.
You've got thirty seconds.
Thank you, sir.
You've got thirty seconds.
I got thirty seconds, I mean. Is there, are there any other? Well, you know, I don't, I don't think these, I don't think these pictures are so rough. What I, what I'm, what I am saying is if these, and I'm sure you're all public servants or you're very concerned, you go look at that property when there's a good hard rain and you watch those open ditches, they are not closed ditches. And if you build that grade up, that water is gonna come that way to Wallace Acres, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Can we ask the developer to come up, please, and comment?
We still on public hearing, we close it. Everybody's, has everybody... Everybody's, has everybody spoken?
That was the last comment.
Okay, well, let's close the public hearing.
It's time to close the floor for public hearing. Ask the developer to address these issues, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, the main concern here is drainage. Um, fortunately for their concerns, this property is at the base flood and above. Uh, there is a piece on the east end and the west end that is below that we will have to bring in half a foot to a foot of fill. Um, but the majority of the subdivision will not be on fill. The base flood's sixteen. The elevation's generally ranged from fourteen and a half to seventeen. So there won't be a bunch of fill brought in. We will be digging the detention pond to detain our runoff that we are increasing, but that's what the detention pond for is to detain it and release it at pre-development levels. You know, they mentioned the drainage study saying everything went east and west. It generally goes east and west. Some of it does go on their property at this current time. But we will be taking all of it, which now some of it goes on their property, and putting it in our subsurface system, bringing it to the pond, releasing it in the back in the, on the, uh, east end. The stuff on the west will still continue to go to forty-four. So that will actually reduce water that currently goes onto their property. It will be detained.
So you're gonna have a subsurface system?
Yes, sir. This is curb and gutter, subsurface drainage. We'll have.
Curb and gutter on the street and two catch basins which go to subsurface drainage, which go both ways?
Yes, sir. If there's a portion, right now there's a ridge in the center, basically in the center of the site. I don't have the exact acreage in front of me, but it's kind of a ridge. So what we've done is we've matched the west side with the amount of flow that goes there now. The east side, we've taken the additional acreage and we put in the detention pond. That's where we're storing the water, releasing it at pre-development.
And where does that, where does that release to when you release?
That releases to a ditch that's on the back of our property between us and lot A1A owned by Mr. Stafford. That, then that goes to the north and then turns again to the east and heads out towards, um, I can't remember the other name of the major road, Joe Severio Street.
So you have a, you'll have a weir or a flood, what kind of structure will you?
There'll be a pipe, there'll be a pipe discharge from the pond to the ditch.
And how's it controlled?
How's the pipe controlled? The pipe on one end is in the pond and the pipe on the other end is in the ditch. And the water just goes up in the pond and releases through the culvert to the ditch.
So you're saying it'll build up enough in the pond, until it builds up enough in the pond, it won't release it to the ditch? There's no, no kind of control structure on it or anything, just?
No, there's no, there, there's four feet of freeboard in the pond. So we'll have the pipe down, you'll have four feet the pond can fill up. That's what's storing the additional water and release it at pre-development. And to speak to their ditches being full, they have an open ditch subdivision. Their ditches are designed to be full when there's a storm event. I mean, that's why the ditches are there. It's keeping water out of their houses. We're putting subsurface with the pond. We're gonna be taking water off of them that goes there now. Mr. Taylor spoke to the traffic and he's exactly right. That is why we did it this way. We are a single loaded street. Instead of having the street all on one side with all the lots against Wallace Acres, we put this S curve in there specifically to calm traffic. And I know everybody, as much calm it as you want to do, there's people who are gonna steal speed. There's nothing we can do about that. And the edge of the road is about twenty-five feet from their property. There's a twelve-foot servitude, there's a sidewalk, and then there's the additional property between the sidewalk and the road. So from their property line to the actual curb of the road is twenty-five feet. So if they're another twenty feet, five feet, we're fifty feet from his house with any portion of the road. They spoke about fencing. Um, again, it's not a requirement there along the road. Obviously, most of these homeowners, um, are gonna have fences. You know, I mean, typically these houses are built, these are nice custom homes. They're gonna have wood fences behind them. Um, so put, you know, everybody who backs up to a lot is gonna have a fence, um, pretty much. I mean, that, that's not a guarantee, but generally that's what happens. Um, along the road, you know, he wasn't really committed to building a fence there. And then the other concern.
That might be, that might be a really nice feature, though, if it were. I think it would alleviate a lot of people, a lot of people's concerns, you know, for a wooden fence along there.
We had, um, they'd also talked about doing some landscaping there in front of his house to block those, the lights, some shrubs, maybe some trees. Uh, they would commit to that, doing some landscaping there to block the lights that are his concern with people coming down that road angled towards his house before they turn down the straightaway. So they would be open to doing landscaping there.
Chad, on the, on the lots themselves, are they gonna be turtleback lots to where the back half of the lot, what, you're a hundred and thirty-five foot deep? The back half is gonna drain off to the back in some kind of swell?
Yes, we will be having, and it's on your plan. There, there's some, you know, there's drainage lines that go to the back. We'll have a rear yard ditch that ties to our drainage inlets that then brings it to the street. Um, and yes, there will be turtlebacked. I mean, you know, you're gonna cut the streets out because we are at the base flood or above. We're gonna be cutting the streets down. Some of that dirt will be placed on the lot to build a building pad. I mean, it's not gonna be, you know, half a foot. Um, but there will be a rear yard ditch. It's required in the ordinance that we provide rear yard drainage. Um, so that will be there too.
And it's gonna be all within your property? It's not gonna be on any neighboring properties at all?
There will be no, no neighboring, no.
All be on your property?
Right. And the other concern, you know, Mr. Hinchey had, you know, yes, there's state law that requires we can't make any impact to them. So he is exactly correct. Uh, we have to have zero impact, which is what we're providing here. Um, and, and we were not aware of any other previous application for a subdivision. Nobody mentioned that there had ever been another application. So once again, we're, we're asking for your approval.
I can answer any questions for staff to, um, Jason, I don't know if you, you can answer this or not, but what's the philosophy on speed bumps on, in curves like that? Is that something that creates more problems than it solves?
To give you an idea, uh, most municipalities that put them in end up taking them out.
Yeah.
And that could be for either maintenance reasons or for complaints from homeowners. They, they end up causing many more problems than, than they solve, unless you have a major safety issue.
Right. Well, the, um, I get the, the concept of having the curve in to slow traffic down. I mean, that does make sense. But my, my experience has been people speed up more between the speed bumps because they have to slow down for the speed bumps, so. Uh, I, I just wondered, you know, wanted, because someone mentioned that, I thought we might wanna, um, tell, tell what we, what we understand about speed bumps and whether they work or not.
The, the, speed, speed humps are, are, are used and, and speed bumps are used. Um, speed bumps are much more abrupt than the speed humps. And, and the, the speed humps are, are very expensive, for one thing, and, and expensive to maintain as well as not really slowing down traffic because they're, they're just a hump and they're not.
The other thing about this is it's, it's a dead end. It's one way. The only people that are gonna be going through there are people that live there.
Right.
Now, I live in a subdivision with, in two entrances and, you know, therefore two exits. But we get no through traffic, but we still have people speed, you know, from the back of the subdivision. They still speed to the front. And we put fifteen mile an hour signs up and we get the police out occasionally. That's really what you have to, you got to get the police out occasionally and give, you know, people get a couple of tickets and they, they, they stop that, but it is, they will do it, you know, anyway. And I, so I appreciate that concern. I didn't realize that there were, uh, I appreciate the developer saying there's fifty feet between the roadway though and the, in theory, the back of the house, which is a pretty good distance.
Yeah, it is. For, for thirty miles an hour, that's a, that's a more than acceptable buffer.
Right, okay.
Is that the speed limit on this road is set for thirty?
I, I, I don't know what the set speed limit's gonna be, but I, I assume that people in neighborhoods are gonna drive thirty miles an hour.
Have y'all set the speed limit, Chad?
Parish ordinance requires twenty-five miles an hour.
Twenty-five, okay.
Safety design.
Built in, huh?
So if we, uh, uh, most of the comments, uh, there were some about traffic and concerns like that, but most of them were about drainage and concerns about that. And we won't know the details until they submit construction drawings. But generally speaking, um, we, um, and we, we've seen this so many times, you know.
But set people at ease with it.
Yeah, that's the thing, you know. We need to be able, and we've talked to, to the parish staff about this a number of times to, to, to give a lot of assurance that we're satisfied with the drain, the design of the drainage system in there. And that in fact, um, not only is it not going to, to, uh, be detrimental to adjacent properties, but could even improve the drainage on that property. And that's the ideal situation. But it all has to be done right and maintained. And, um, you know, there's, there's some risk there involved. But generally speaking, we, we have some pretty stringent requirements regarding drainage on these properties.
They're overdesigned for the most part.
They, they need, yeah, they pretty much are.
Yeah.
So, um, there's absolutely no guarantees and, you know, we've already closed the public hearings. I'm sorry.
I think this would make somebody.
Shut him up.
Sir, you've, you've addressed twice. We've allowed that. And public hearing is closed. Now. Thank you. Staff, I'm going to assume that in looking at the fact that you've approved, uh, traffic impact, drainage impact, nothing has been said to change your mind. That being said, I'm also going to assume that, again, your comments are still approval. There have been no particular violations or safety concerns. That being said, any further comments from the commissioners?
Just, just one other, one gentleman mentioned, uh, his concern about his shop being there and his, him being handcuffed and being able to do the activities that he would normally do. But you know what? That, that's, you know, difficult to address. The fact is, if, if, if the fact that you're there where you are with your shop, if that is not attractive to the, to, to the people wanting to move into there, they're not gonna buy the lots. Um, that's, you know, the developer has to do whatever he, if that means putting a fence up in order to sell those lots to, to have some sort of visual buffer between something else. But when people start complaining about you hunting squirrels, yeah, I get that, but, uh, we're not gonna. People wanna move into Ascension Parish and they wanna move into nice subdivisions and we're not gonna, that's not gonna stop.
Right.
So we have to do the best we can. And we, we would like developers, I mean, we change, we went through a serious change in subdivision regulations in order to make these nicer and to have the developer require, uh, more, you know, more amenities, sidewalks and other things. This is an unusual subdivision, a very narrow piece of property with the properties like this, but he's still complying with our requirements. So we do the best we can with this. But, um, developers aren't gonna stop coming in here and wanting to develop. As long as they follow our guidelines and requirements, it's difficult for us to.
Staff, is a comment?
Yes, when the engineer was speaking, we heard a vague promise for landscaping. Could we get it in the record what the promise is so that it can get stated so that when the thing is complete, we know whether or not that promise has been fulfilled? Because otherwise, you know, one dwarf Yopon Holly has satisfied, I put additional landscaping in.
Good point, Ricky.
But do we require that in our ordinances on this size of a subdivision? Do we require that?
Well, we have.
Is that something that we can, we can mandate that?
It's viable to ask.
He, they said they would put additional landscaping. So if it's not in the motion, it's never gonna happen.
Okay. Here we go.
Where does Bush?
Do you feel that confident in what you stated? Back it up?
Yeah, I feel confident that the developer's gonna do what he says he's gonna do. Um, and, and what we're talking about here is we're talking about where, where the road's coming up past lots thirteen and fourteen. It turns for that short section to where people's lights are shining towards, um, Mr. Pierce there. So that would be on one side of the road. Um, you know, what, I think what they would be willing to do would be a fifty-foot section there. Because that's where you would be getting the light shining in. So I mean, for fifty feet there, I mean, look, I'm not a landscape architect, but they would plant some, some shrubs that would be high enough to block, uh, the lights there. I mean, I, I had this in traffic class, but I can't remember how high a headlight is. It's two and a half or three feet tall. I can't remember. So I mean, you're talking about some landscaping that's maybe four or five feet tall here that would block the headlights.
Actually, and from the other direction also.
Well, you got four curves really to deal with.
Well, but I don't think his house is positioned to where he would be getting headlights from the people coming from the back to the front. Now, maybe, maybe so, but the way he spoke, his house was up closer to the front to where the headlights from the people entering would be getting the lights in his.
Well, I'm assuming there are people that live on both sides of this proposed development and there are four curves where headlights would be, uh, would be shining off of this development property. That's all I'm saying, you know, coming or going.
Right. I, I, we would wanna look at the, where the houses are positioned and see which of those curves caused the problem. I'm just speaking to Mr. Pierce. He's the only one who came up and said that his house would be in the direct line with that curve. But they would be willing to do landscaping in those areas where any.
What do we need, Ricky, and we have a commitment?
Okay, so is it four feet at the time of installation? Is it four feet ten years from installation?
How much landscaping are we talking about?
How much landscaping within that fifty feet?
I mean, I feel like we're going down a, a bad path of designing landscape in the middle of a meeting and that's not.
We would. I don't know that we can, that we have the authority to regulate landscaping.
It's not a mandate. It's not a mandate.
No, we're just trying to alleviate the situation with adjacent homeowners.
At some point.
We would commit, they're gonna have to review the plan. So we would commit to install landscaping that satisfies the staff, that adequately blocks vehicle lights for those houses that needed. Now, he, you know, he's, now he's saying that both curves. Well, there's no way that both curves hit his house.
I don't know what houses are out there, so I, I can't.
Right, I don't either.
So let, what's your statement just now, I think is fine.
Some semblance of landscaping.
That's what you said, right? Staff's concern.
Right, to satisfy staff's concerns of headlights into a house.
Okay, that's good, good faith on both, both sides.
We approve.
Well, if there's a, if there are a house, right.
What is gonna satisfy staff? That is the question.
All that being said.
To block some lights?
No further comments. Need a motion from the floor?
I move for approval.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. Island eleven, we have an ordinance for public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council members to the Ascension Parish Unified Land Code. We have ordinance SR fourteen, that's twelve, revisions to subdivision regulations. Staff.
Yes, sir. So at our last meeting, we had a nice discussion about revisions to the code to address the appeal procedure. And as the current code is written, if a, an application gets denied and they wish to appeal the decision, they submit a request for an appeal and that comes back to this board. And if it's denied a second time, then they submit an appeal to the Planning Commission Appeals Board and, you know, they come back for a third meeting. Our recommendation to revise the code was to take out the second time that it comes to this board. Because in all honesty, they're not adding it, they're not changing anything. They're just saying, hey, did you guys screw up? We'd like a second chance that you guys over changing your mind. So we wanted to remove that step and the discussion was concern over the process and, you know, how do things get done? And, and how is the meeting gonna be held? And, and ultimately we came to, we don't control the Planning Commission Appeals Board. We don't control how they do things, but we can control how things get to them. So what we did is we added a single line to what we had proposed. And it reads, "Public notice for an appeal to the Planning Commission Appeals Board shall be in accordance with section seventeen four oh five dot D dot two." That is the exact same section that we use when we advertise any item for this board. So we will post a sign on the property, we will publish it in the newspaper, we will do all those things that we ordinarily do. So if that section ever changes, then the appeals public notice section will get updated because we're referencing it. We have found that rather than creating redundant text in the code, it's easier to refer to a section that already works and say, do that, because that, that, that's what we wanna do.
So basically, it just takes out the reconsideration?
It takes out the reconsideration by this board and it puts in some standards for what the application and the applicant must do before they get to that board.
Oh, so the, the original language would only, only referenced, uh, major and minor subdivisions. So we're changing that to just an application, right?
Yes, sir.
So that covers, it's just a broader, a broader language.
It, it covers everything that comes before this board.
Now, if the applicant, proposer, what have you, deviates from the original plan, I understand bypass. There's no need to come back to us with something that we've already seen. Let's assume deviates, maybe to accommodate what those challenges were, it passed. What is the process there?
So that was the ordinance you guys approved at the last meeting that is currently, uh, at the council level that I believe was just approved. So if an applicant is denied, they have two options. Actually, they have three options. The first one is revise the application to address the reason why it was denied, wait a year and come back, or appeal the decision. So they have three options, none of which we believe, you know, takes away any of their rights. Because we're basically saying, change it to address the no, wait a year and come back because, you know, temperatures change, or appeal the decision. And the appeal would then follow this new process if it passes the council. I would assume that if somebody's gonna appeal a decision, and, uh, legal counsel can correct me if I'm wrong, they wouldn't be allowed to change their application because they're appealing the decision you made based on that application.
Right.
Ricky, we have an appeals hearing tomorrow night here that, we don't, I mean, but there is one. And some, uh, some of us, I think, who can be here will be here for that.
Yeah.
How will that be? Do we have any, any knowledge about how that's gonna be handled?
I'm gonna defer to legal counsel.
Okay.
It, it will be conducted as.
What's their current guidance, I guess?
It'll be conducted similar to how this meeting is conducted, I have informed the three members that they will need to elect a chairperson at the beginning of the meeting. And we will have a roll call, pledge, public hearing, public comment period, so, but this will be the only item on the agenda. But, uh, it'll be conducted just like your meetings.
So it was, it was intended that the appeals board only sit when necessary.
Correct.
Obviously, because why would you convene a meeting?
They haven't convened since nineteen ninety-seven.
Right.
I think there are two, two members in the original board still sitting on the board, and then we have a new, a new member.
Okay, curious.
I think you've answered something that was asked in the last meeting, how are they to know? But, considering you said public hearing, so apparently they have been notified and given the opportunity to be present?
It's been posted.
We, we posted just like we would in the other public, and advertised, yes, and I, some people specifically did request notice, and I believe staff did inform those people. Requested an email or something.
What we have in place right now did not require that we put a sign up though, correct? And that's what we're writing in, in accordance with section seventeen four oh five, I like the sign part, I think that gives.
Not only are we, um, streamlining the process, we're making it more accessible to the public.
I would agree, I think so, yeah.
At this time, open the floor for public hearing.
Sue Heath. I knew you couldn't start the new year without me, so.
Happy new year.
Plus, I thought I'd cha, challenge the new chairman, Noah. I did not realize last, uh, meeting, when this was put forth, that Ricky had added the, or the Planning Commission had added all of this additional language about what the applicant has to do, and I think that's great. My next question was gonna be, why can't we go on and add more language about the actual conduct of the appeals board? Something like Ms. Manta just said, you know, lay out the rules, what's going to happen at the appeals board. This sort of stops with the appeals board. And, I did not realize it was published in the paper, the only way I knew about this was because Ricky sent me an email. Where do you publish it in the paper, I mean?
Under public notices.
Okay, and I don't think there was a sign put up, if there was, it was blown away. But, um, that was one concern, that we have some ground rules listed in here from start to finish. What, who's going to orchestrate the appeals board, does everybody just show up? Who's going to be in charge, so to speak? And keep things running the way they should be, as you do as, as chairman of the Planning Commission. And I guess being notified, oh, the other comment I wanted to make was, um, at the, as far as a, a, something procedure, procedurally for the appeal board, I think it would be nice if at the end of the appeal board, or when they make their decision, that they document that. Because the information I was provided from the last time they met in nineteen ninety-seven was some semblance of a recording of what happened, but the decision wasn't made at that appeals board. And then, either the letter was misdated, or somebody didn't get it in writing, and a year later, or a, a, a letter dated the following year says, I don't know who the commissioner was, then I spoke to so-and-so from the appeals board, and he confirmed on the telephone call that this was the decision. And I, uh, I don't think that's really the way you want an appeals board to be conducted, I think there should be closure in, in writing, and I think they should say why they approved it or denied it. I mean, after all, we've gone through this seven months and there are three people we don't know are going to make a decision on something. I had more comments, but I quit.
Comments? I think Legal just advised us the process would be comparable to this situ, situation where we are. She just asked that they appoint a chairperson, so it appears that the process will be run comparable to this. It will be someone in charge, and of course, if it's comparable to, it will be documented.
They will have minutes, I mean.
We'll have a secretary and we'll take minutes, yes.
As, as, any public meeting, you would do that, right? So we, we don't need to spell out the rules for a public meeting again, since it's already rules, right?
Right, we're following open meetings laws, the, the policies and procedures that we have in conducting this meeting.
And if they don't make the decision at the meeting, which I suspect they won't, and they take it under advisement, then how do we know?
I think they'll make the decision.
I will, I will recommend, and, um, I will recommend that they make the decision at the meeting, I suppose they do. I know that the Planning Commission does have the option to defer, but we do have to be certain that we don't run afoul of that sixty-day period.
Yes.
Um, because if you do, it would be considered automatically approved. So, in order for them, and I think we might be, what, thirty days in already? So, you, they would, I, I would advise them to be, be very careful about that, and if they did want to defer the decision, the decision would need to be a vote in an open meeting, so they would have to reconvene, schedule that meeting, so that the public can attend that as well. So if they do decide to defer, the, the answer would need, or the, the vote would need to be made in a, in an open meeting.
Lindsay, some of us intend to be there, um, but, eh, would there a problem? I don't know how many of us intend to be there, but is there a problem with us having a quorum of planning, or, uh, commissioners at the meeting?
If you're just in attendance and you're not discussing it, or, I mean, I suppose, it wouldn't be a problem, I think you, you need to be careful and, and not speak, because it's, you're, you're sitting as a, almost like a district court, and they're appealing your decision. So you're not gonna wanna get up there and testify, they have the record, they've been provided, I spoke with one of them today and he said he had watched all the meetings, so they're, they have your discussions and they hopefully studied them and determined the reasons why you, you voted the way you did.
Could, would it be possible for them to ask one of us to, for a comment or, or something about our decision?
I don't, I don't think it would be barred by law, I don't know if they'll do that or not, but I will, I will check on that before tomorrow.
We weren't volunteering for that, Bob.
Right, right, I can understand, I can understand.
Okay.
Okay. I still don't like the appeals board, but I don't think y'all can do anything about it.
Any further comments, staff, commissioners? That being said, I need a motion.
I move that we recommend this, uh, this, uh, to the parish council.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So noted, motion passed. This side made the motion, this side. Okay. Staff report.
No staff.
No staff report. Engineering.
Nothing.
That being said, can I get a motion, did I hear that?
Yes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I say yippee?
Good meeting.
Meeting adjourned.